Good morning. Today is the seventh day of May. The time is nine o'clock. The Board of Commissioners is in session. All three Commissioners are present. This is our open business meeting. Identify yourself for the record, starting over here.
Rachel, you're in the assessor's office.
I'm in the assessor's office, monitor vehicles.
Randy Rutland, jury commissioner.
Zach Kirk, development services.
Josh Brown, operations.
Cody Smith, operations.
Bob Perkins, Ada County procurement.
Abatista Exbolito.
Bonnie Oberbilly, recorder's office.
Ken Sinclair, fleet management.
Zach Hammer, procurement.
Evan Amadon, procurement.
Robin Swayney, procurement.
Alyssa Ellington, procurement.
Sam D'Avio, court administrator.
Elizabeth Duncan, communications.
Anna Icay.
Ethan Bordey with the clerk's office.
Beth Montrejo.
Welcome to our meeting today. Madam Clerk, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, we do not.
Oh, we have a couple on the bridge up here. If we can get you to identify yourself. We have Spencer. Are you listening?
Boarding Commissioners. This is Spencer Laye with Ada County Sheriff's Office.
Okay. And we have Omara.
Steve Omara, IT Director, Ada County. Good morning.
Good morning. And we have a number, a 208 something. Could you identify yourself?
Yes, sir. My name is Nick Brady with Rizoney Pizza and Meridian.
Nick Brady, okay. And then we have Herb.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Herb came to Leinfield.
Good. Well, thank you. And we have no changes to the agenda. Well, Evan's right here. He's in front of us. But I know, but that's because these guys confuse. Why? You're in two places. So is Annie up there, too. Anyway, we have no change agenda. We have an employee recognition. Would you read the recognition?
I will. And this is for Evan. Evan Amadon is the IPPA Buyer of the Year.
That's why he has his computer.
All right. Well, shortly after graduating Boise State University in supply chain management, Evan Amadon, CPPB, NIGP, CPP, started his procurement career with Ada County Procurement on October 6, 2017. Evan started out as a procurement officer and was promoted to a procurement officer two on October 1, 2022. Evan contributed significantly to the advancement of our Bonfire E-Procurement System, so much so that in 2023, he was awarded the Bonfire Power User of the Year Award. Being the consummate professional, Evan was not good with just one certification. He now holds two. His Certified Professional Public Buyer Certification and the NIGP Certified Procurement Professional. Evan's willingness to help other procurement professionals with difficult problems and his contributions to the profession are a couple of the many reasons Evan was awarded the Idaho Public Purchasing Association Buyer of the Year Award for 2024 by his peers in procurement. Additionally, Evan has been nominated nationally for the NIGP Procurement Specialist of the Year Award, to be announced this August in Charlotte, North Carolina. Congratulations, Evan Amadon.
Bob, would you like to say anything?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just want to say that, you know, when Evan came to us seven years ago, he applied for the position and came and interviewed and he had, he was running against some other candidates that were also in the interview process. But after the interview, Evan pulled me aside and said, Bob, if you hire me, I'm going to work hard for you. And Evan has, and it really exceeded my expectations. So thank you, Evan, for all you've done and thank you for being just a wonderful employee. And they always come to work with great ideas and a passion for their profession. So thank you.
Yeah. Well, congratulations, Evan.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. All right, moving on, we have a proclamation.
Can you get the picture with the big award?
We'll do, we'll do it to.
All right.
We'll do it after we do this. How's that sound?
Sounds good.
Okay. Did you read the proclamation?
Okay. Proclamation, Board of Commissioners, Ada County, City of Idaho, to designate the week of May 6 through the 10, 2024, as Jury Appreciation Week. Whereas the right to a trial by jury is one of the core values of American citizenship, and whereas the obligation and privilege to serve as a juror are fundamental to our democracy, and whereas the court depends on citizens to serve as jurors, and service by citizens as jurors is indispensable to the judicial system, and whereas all citizens should be encouraged to respond when summoned for jury duty, and whereas it is important for the courts and county to show appreciation for the jury system and for the tens of thousands of citizens who annually give their time and talents to serve as juries on juries, now therefore be resolved that the Ada County Board of Commissioners, in collaboration with the Fourth District Court, Judicial District Court, are committed to the following goals. Applauding jurors who fulfill their jury duty, ensuring that responsibility of jury service is shared fairly by supporting employees who are called upon to serve as jurors, ensuring that all jurors are treated with respect, and providing jurors with tools that will assist them in making their decisions. And to hereby proclaim the week of May 6 through May 10, 2024, to be designated as Jury Appreciation Week.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to designate the week of May 6 through 10 as Jury Appreciation Week.
And I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. Any discussion?
Mr. Commissioner, if I could. Good morning, Commissioner and Chair. Thank you very much for this opportunity for partnering with us. In the proclamation, it states that it's such a fantastic duty of our citizenship to have the opportunity to be in jury duty and to be in a place where people can truly dedicate their time to. So we're very fortunate in Ada County. We have fantastic facilities and a place where people could come and feel comfortable and really truly dedicate their mind to their role as jurors in deciding the future of others. And so we are very, very fortunate for that. This year is going to be an all-time record for us if we keep going this way with the number of juries. We're anticipating probably over 400, which will be way over 400. It will be an all-time record for us. So we're excited and very busy, of course, under the direction of Randy Rutland, our jury commissioner. He's a truly a juror cheerleader for us. So we're really excited to have him and all the work that he and his staff is doing for our citizens.
Well, good. Would you like to say a few words?
You know, I'm just so appreciative of our citizens here in Ada County. It really makes my job easy. I get a lot of feedback from our jurors on just how excited they are. It blows my mind when somebody says, I'm going to tell my friends about my jury service. And just to hear them brag about it. So again, just very fortunate to have the citizens that we have here in Ada County.
Well, great. Well, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just as a thank you again for Randy, because I've served on a jury in other places and I know, and I've heard comments from other people who've served here, it is something that nobody looks forward to, but it's a pleasure in the way you conduct the business here and people appreciate it, including the people who are on both sides of the aisle there. So thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Well, I've been called to jury duty, but I've always been kicked off. I never went on a jury.
Show fans, how many people here have been, gotten a jury summons while living in Ada County?
Everybody.
And how many people actually served on a jury?
Couple.
Yeah, I've done a couple. Well, yeah, and I want to thank you guys, too. And I think this is timely when we're in the middle of, you know, one of the biggest trials that Ada County has had to accommodate where something like 2,000 summons had been sent out to find a jury of 12. So and we're doing that as our sort of duty to our sister counties. This is not our case, but we're handling it. And so we do appreciate everything that you guys are doing to make it smooth. And I think everyone will probably agree, despite the size of the trial, everything's going smooth in Ada County and everyone can continue to work without big distractions. And that's really appreciated.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Well, if you can make a jury proclamation, then we'll take Evan up there. Are you here? We got everybody here. We're here on behalf of citizens. Together, together. How are we doing? All right. How's that?
Perfect. Oh, nice. Very nice. And a lot of good, big happy smile.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Here's the proclamation.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Evan, you can leave your computer there.
Even though, even though it's a part of you.
Yes. It's kind of attached. Anyway, congratulations on your, on your award. That's, we're proud of you. We're being a good, good boy.
Thank you.
Thank you. We use our computer. We appreciate you guys.
Congratulations.
Love back.
Your department's really racking up the trophies.
It's not you. Well, I'm sure we see his trophy case down there. It's embarrassing at the scene. Get a bigger one. Anyway, okay. We do have now the next item. We'll need to have a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
Mr. Chair, I move, move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I take my motion. Yeah, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So this is the final ranking and award recommendation for RFP 24033. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, before you this morning, unfinished business is the final ranking for RFP 24033, the Ada County Sheriff's Office Jail RFID inmate tracking system. And the evaluation team has been the initial evaluation of the proposals, but the evaluation team would like to conduct interviews and presentations with the top two proposers. And therefore, we'd like to request that we re-table the final rankings and award recommendations to the June 11, 2024 Open Business Meeting.
Okay. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to table the final ranking and award recommendation of RFP 24033 to June 11, 2024 for further consideration to allow the interview presentation phase of the RFP process.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you much. Okay, moving on, we have a resolution 2979. I'll open the public hearing on resolution 2979, Resolution Consultant Procurement of Licensing Support. Want to tell us a little bit about the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm not familiar with this sole source, but looking at it, it looks like it's for computer aided dispatch with our central square. And anything central square, I think it's going to be proprietary to be able to, be able to work on their system.
Okay. Any discussions? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve resolution number 2979, as listed below the agenda.
I take the motion.
Yeah, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. We have some bids to open, looks like.
We do. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, under the new business, we have two openings, the first of which is RFP 24034, the Ada County Fire Alarm Testing, Inspection and Maintenance. And Evan has those queued up for us. If you're ready for us to open. There's Bonfires opening there. This, a little bit about this project is to help find a contractor to provide comprehensive fire alarm testing, inspection and maintenance services for the various Ada County facilities. All right. So we have the one proposal up there, and that is Fire Sentry Systems Incorporated. So we'll need a little time to evaluate this proposal, make sure it meets our administrative and technical requirements. So we'd like to request that this be tabled for final ranking and award recommendation to the May 14, 2024 Open Business Meeting.
Okay. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to table the final rankings and award recommendation for RFP 24034, Ada County Fire Alarm Testing, Inspection and Maintenance to May 24.
14th.
May 14, 2024.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now we have the opening of RFP 24035.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the opening of RFP 24035, Ada County Fire Suppression, Testing, Inspection and Maintenance. We only received one proposal for this project as well. And if you're ready for Evan to open, he'll open it up. So similar to RFP 24034, this project is to help find a contractor to provide a comprehensive fire sprinkler system testing, inspection and maintenance services for our various county And the one proposer that proposed on this project is State's Fire. And our evaluation team will need some time to evaluate this proposal as well. And we'd like to request that this be tabled for final ranking and award recommendation to the May 14, 2024 Open Business Meeting.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to table the final rankings and award recommendations for RFP 24035, Ada County Fire Suppression Testing, Inspection and Maintenance to May 14, 2024.
I take the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Okay. Next up, we have licenses. There's a number of new ones and renewals and.
There's one catering permit.
Catering permit. I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve and ratify the catering permit signed by Commissioner Beck on April 30, 2024, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now we have some more catering permits, a couple of new licenses. Any question or discussion on any of the items before us?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would you like to take up the negative assessment first or deal with the other ones and then come back to that?
No, let's take up the first one in the order.
Because I don't think Heather Luther is here, but.
Chairman and Commissioners, we've got both Bonnie Oberling representing the recorder's office as well as Spencer on the.
Spencer.
I can certainly speak to the negative assessment.
Yeah. Well, let's hear it with Bonnie and then Spencer. Go ahead.
I'm actually going to defer to Spencer. It's his, their recommendation from the sheriff's office.
All right.
And I'll let him speak first.
All right, go ahead. Spencer.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as you know, pursuant to Ada County Code, the sheriff's office does, conducts an assessment on all applicants for liquor licenses. We obviously don't approve or deny the licenses. That's a percent, that's up to the board. But we make sort of, or negative recommendations in accordance with the qualifications found also in Ada County Code. One of those qualifications is that the owner or applicant must be able to possess alcohol or it's actually written in the negative that if they are not able to possess alcohol, transport alcohol, then they are to be denied. That code or ordinance that is actually tells us that if in, within the last three years immediately preceding the application, if they've been barred through some sort of judgment or conviction, then they're to be at least flagged or denied, or at least to be, it's to be brought up to the board's attention. The owner of Rizoney's Pizza, Mr. Nicholas Brady, has, was sentenced on February 1, 2024 for driving under the influence. Part of that sentence was an unsupervised probation with a term that he's not to possess alcohol. And we've attached the terms of probation to our letter that we sent to the board. As I stated, Ada County Ordinance 4-3-7, subsection four, states any applicant who within three years immediately preceding the date filing of the application has been convicted for a violation of any law or regulation in the state of Idaho regulating possession of alcohol or intoxicating liquors. As I stated in my letter also, it is technically the restaurant that, or the LLC that's going to be owned liquor. I spoke with a number of probation officers where even if this was supervised probation, they actually would not have flagged this and not have thought, filed a probation violation or anything along those terms. But it is one of the terms that we are asked to assess and bring to the board's attention pursuant to Ada County Code. And that is why we wrote the letter and wrote the assessment. I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Any questions for Officer Spencer?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So Spencer, the, he's, how many years on probation was he required to do? Is that three years?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, the term of probation is, I believe, one year of unsupervised probation. So it will go through, it's unsupervised probation expires 1/31/2025.
Okay.
And as part of the probation, he's not allowed to possess alcohol, but according to the probation department, that doesn't include if he's at a restaurant that serves it, that he owns.
That is correct, Mr. Commissioner.
Okay. Any other questions of Deputy Spencer?
We do have the applicants online as well.
I'm aware of that. Thank you. Okay. Nick, are you on, are you online? Mr. Brady?
I am on the line, yes, sir.
Okay. Would you like to speak to the issue?
Yes, sir. Well, thank you for allowing me to attend the meeting today. And as Spencer mentioned, I am on probation, unsupervised. And of course, I've made a bad decision, you know, last November and decided to drive when I should not have been. And, you know, I've been sober these last almost six months now. And it's certainly a little mistake and a move forward from it. And I just appreciate your consideration in my application for my restaurant here in Meridian.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Was this your first DOI?
It is not, sir. I had one seven, almost eight years ago. So this is my second.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do you have anyone else at the, at the restaurant or partners or anything like that, that, you know, they could have the license under their name?
You know, sir, I mean, there would definitely have to be a plan, you know, a plan B, of course, you know, if my application is not able to go through. But as of right now, of course, with me being the owner and manager, of course, that's why the application is in, in my name, to be able to oversee everything.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you. Okay, so we've heard.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've heard from, from Deputy Spencer and we've heard from the, from the applicant. What, what, what kind of discussion are we going to have now? Or is there, is a motion in order?
Mr. Chair, I'll, maybe I'll just throw back to Spencer again. So maybe you could explain under the, under our ordinance, what, what level of discretion in this kind of situation are we allowed under the ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioner, you have almost, you, you make the ultimate decision. So the board has the ability to make any decision. They can ignore or, I guess, look to the qualifications. But it does say in 4-3-7, no license shall be issued. However, and then lists the qualifications, one of them being the one that we have notated. But the, the board does have quite a bit of discretion with those decisions and whether they would like to make a decision to ignore that or if they don't believe number four is met in this circumstance, where you might say the fourth qualification is for somebody who's maybe had a liquor license removed or suspended or revoked, opposed to somebody who's not, couldn't personally own or possess liquor or alcohol, but the LLC that they own or a business that they work out may be able to.
And could you go over again what your communication was with the probation parole office?
I reached out to our. I reached out to our probation and parole, so Ada County probation and parole, misdemeanor probation, and asked, had this been a supervised probation, would this have been a different decision, or if you found out you've been approved, this person's on supervised probation, they're not allowed to possess alcohol, would you write this as a violation? And they said, no, they would not. I even reached out to Boise City Prosecutor or City's Attorney's Office, who is was the prosecuting agency in this case, to ask if they would file a probation violation on this case, and they also said, no, they would not.
Okay. Any other questions?
You so that's in supervised or unsupervised probation?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioner, this is this is unsupervised, so if there were to be a violation in this case, it would be a determination of Boise City and the prosecutor of the on that case. That prosecutor indicated that they're not going to be filing a if the board approves, they're not going to be filing a probation violation on this. And that was that went along and was the same as our probation office, had this been, which it is once again, this situation is not, but had this been supervised probation, our probation officer said they would not be they would not file a probation violation for this. As it is, this isn't having it in their home or, you know, possessing it for in that terms, they this is somebody who works at a facility that has that also happens to serve alcohol.
Any other questions?
To the applicant, the so in in answer to Commissioner Davidson's question, are is there another option for the business as opposed to your application that would still allow the business to function?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, there's a number of options that they could go through that would, you know, place a few rungs in the ladder in between the owner and who's actually possessing it, but I will note that the the code doesn't really make a distinction or the ordinance doesn't really make a distinction on if the person is an owner or partner of the business, then these qualificat they need they should be meeting these qualifications. There's even really one of the employees should be meeting all these qualifications as well. So, yes, there there could be some levels of distance put in between, but it would be it'd be a little bit of a semantics change because the code really does state, if you are one of the owners, partners in the facility, then you this is one of the we'd be flagging this regardless. So if they said, oh, okay, well, the manager of the bar is the only person that's going to be in charge of the alcohol, that's fine, but that still doesn't quite meet the the ordinance as it's written.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, is there a motion or discussion?
Well, I'll I'll kick it off. I think I'm I'm gonna move to approve this, and my reasons are, he is on a very low level of probation. The probation officer does not have a problem with this individual owning a restaurant that serves beer and wine. Of course, we should point out, this is not a liquor license, this is a beer and wine license that we're dealing with. And I think, you know, obviously, we could throw some stumbling blocks in the way and he could find a way around it with maybe somebody else doing the application, but I mean, at the end of the day, the facts are the same, he's going to be at a restaurant and that serves alcohol. So for me, I don't really necessarily see the value in trying to get him to have somebody else file it because the result's going to be the same. So based on that, and I know that, you know, it's it's tough to run a restaurant without beer and wine in a lot of cases, I'm I'm gonna lean towards supporting the application.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I I'm inclined to not approve it based on the law, the application of the law, so that that's that's my position is I I think we should apply the law, and I know it's going to be difficult, but after after a time, they can come back and apply.
Well, they could apply immediately if he has another partner up there that could they could do it, isn't that correct?
Exactly, that's my point.
Yeah, and yeah, I kind of tend to agree with that, that the law is clear, or it's our ordinance, this is law, and it is and it is clear, and if there were not another avenue, I might take a different look at it, but there is another avenue that that Mr. Brady can can make application, so is there a motion?
So I would I would move to deny the license transfer for the Rizoni's Pizza identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board based on the discussion that there is another option, that business can still stay open and function.
Oh, yes, and I guess, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion and and a second, and I would I would agree, and I think we we should have that discussion. We don't want we don't want Mr. Brady to have to shut down his business, but if he has another option and he can apply with just one of his employees or something, I think that'd be a better solution, then we would stick to our to our ordinance. So you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, all right, moving on. We have a number of catering permits. And new license. I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the remaining licenses as listed on the agenda, including ten catering permits, one new license, three license transfers, and eighty license renewals. Authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. We have a representative of the clerk's office, oh, here we do.
Chairman Vic, we do, Commissioners, good morning. I want to make it very clear on the record that the clerk's office is not competing with procurement, Bob Perkins, or Evan by any stretch of that adhesion. However, we're very proud that Idaho's Best Places to Work just announced that our office is number two, not only in the southwest region, but also statewide. So our category is is the large category, which is between one hundred and two hundred and fifty employees. We had a viewing party on the unveiling and it was a lot of momentum and some some folks riding pretty sky highs, so we're really proud of this.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, yeah.
I think it's important to celebrate the wins, we've certainly got a lot of work ahead of us, and wanted to highlight of most importance, the elections front, we're two weeks away from the May election. Hard to believe it's come up this quickly. Early voting started yesterday, we've got four brick and mortar locations. Boise City Hall, I had the pleasure of opening that with the chief judge. Trent Triple helped open up the Eagle Library and Katie Reed was over at Meridian City Hall, and then obviously we had plenty of resources at our location at the warehouse. Also, we've got a fifth option for early voting, that's our mobile trailer, it's touring around five different libraries over the two weeks, so we're giving citizens a lot of options to early vote. Seven hundred and thirty-four voters came through the doors yesterday, hoping to see that number ramp up.
Where's the trailer?
Trailer was at Bound Crossing, will be there again today, and then moves to the next the next library, those details are on our website. Also, we're seeing a spike in absentee requests, we've had just shy of seventeen thousand ballots requested from absentee, they're starting to trickle back in, so we've received about four thousand, and we're really excited to dedicate the rest of our efforts for twenty-first. So a lot going on in our office, Chairman and Commissioners.
I see where you're you're looking for some more help for Election Day, how's that coming?
Chairman, I can say that staffing of the warehouse looks very good, we've created a friendly competition amongst our office to recruit friends and families, so it's it's panning out quite well, however, we still need some help out at some of the precincts and polling locations, so our teams are working pretty hard to recruit those last folks, but we're getting close, getting real close.
And a member of the public wants to be an Election Day worker, how would they apply for that?
Chairman. Commissioner Davidson, thanks for bringing that up. Ada County elections, they would go straight to our website, and it's blaring where to go to help out on Election Day, and then our team will take the reins from there and line them up and coordinate everything needed.
All right.
And how many are left, how how many positions do you have that you need to?
Chairman, Commissioners, don't want to scare anyone, last I heard was still a couple hundred, however, they've put a big dent into that, as I got an update yesterday, so I think we're we're getting pretty close.
Good. Great.
And Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
How how many traditionally, how many absentee ballots are not returned statistically?
Chairman, good question, don't have stats on that. I'd have to pull up some of Anthony's magical data sets on the website.
Just just curious, you're using four thousand out of seventeen thousand ballots returned?
We've we've had seventeen thousand requests, we've received four thousand, what I can say is that the four thousand, only twenty-one of those four thousand were not valid, which means they did not have a signature signature, or they need some sort of follow-up, so only twenty-one out of four thousand. I can say that at least on part of the question, what we do receive, they're incredibly valid, and we can move forward with the cast.
And how do you follow up on those?
Good question, Chairman, Commissioners, we've got dedicated personnel in in our team on elections that's on the phone emailing, and they're reaching out to the citizens, the voters, and they're trying to get that validated before Election Day.
Because that's to clarify, that they have to be in by close of polls on Election Day, correct?
Correct.
So you can do all that work if it's an absentee ballot in advance of that?
Chairman, Commissioners, that's correct, so we actually do a late sweep at the post office on Election Day, so if it's in the post office on the day of, we're going to get our hands on it.
Thank you. If a person requests an absentee ballot and for some reason does not return it, can they order on Election Day?
Chairman, yes, they can. That absentee would be spoiled, and they would vote at their precinct, at their location.
All right.
Do they have to bring the absentee with them so that they can destroy it or mark it or?
Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, they can, and we would spoil it physically, or they cannot bring it, the machine will know it's already issued one, our team will be trained to to speak on that, and then they can move forward if they still want to cast that vote with the ballot on the of.
All right. All right, any anything else going on in the in the clerk's office?
Plenty, plenty, we won't get into budget today.
Well, good. Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, we have a claims journal, I'll accept the motion in the claims journal.
I move to authorize payment of the claims on the claims journal dated May third, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we have some personnel actions, I'll accept the motion on the personnel actions.
I'll move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, and at the summary sheet, we may file the Commissioner's orders.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we have our distinguished assessor with us tonight, Rebecca Arnold.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we might not be quite as busy as the clerk's office right now, but we are in the middle of processing property tax reduction applications, and we're trying to finalize the assessed values for two hundred and thirty thousand and change parcels in Ada County, so those notices can go out at the end of the month. So we're a little greedy.
Well, good. You're on schedule to send them out.
We are.
Then that's when the real fun begins.
Yes, for you.
For your office as well. Yes, all right.
Depends on the number of appeals we.
Yeah, it does, does. Well, let's see, we have a number of tax cancellations.
We do.
And did you have anything else you'd like to?
Nope.
Okay, good enough. All right, we have some tax cancellations, I'll accept the motion.
Yes, clarify, these are not cancellations.
I yeah, I always clarify that these are not actual cancellations, only a cancellation of a portion of their, they they still pay taxes, this is just a kind of redemption, but that's what the code says, tax cancellation.
Correct, I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda and authorize, which includes one tax cancellation for two thousand twenty-one, two tax cancellations for two thousand twenty-two, and five tax cancellations for two thousand twenty-three, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we have our distinguished treasurer.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the Treasurers' Office this week is focused on generating the second half reminder notices for the two thousand twenty-three property taxes. So as you'll recall, the actual two thousand twenty-three tax bills were mailed last November. Since then, there have been hundreds of tax cancellations or tax adjustments, so I'm really grateful to the staff in the Assessor's Office, but also the Treasurers' Office to process, again, hundreds of tax cancellations, so that we can send with these reminder notices the most current tax amount owing. So those should be hit in mailboxes sometime next week, and then that amount will be due by June twentieth.
Okay. Any anything else for us?
That's it.
Any questions from the for the treasurer? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, we have next on the on the agenda, the approval of minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next up, we have a couple of interim events at Expo Idaho. I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the two interim event agreements and the six concessionary agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just just as an applause here, he can comment if he wants, but this is an example of how it's well managed so that we can actually, it pays for itself, I guess, my point is making here that this isn't taxpayers' money because of how it's managed, and these these events are an example of that.
It's an enterprise fund, no question. All right. Bob, did you want to say anything?
No.
No.
Amazing.
All right, good.
No, I appreciate the comments.
Yes.
As an enterprise fund, we diligently work hard to try and make sure we stay in the in the black, so.
All right. So you made the motion, was there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. We have a couple of agreements for the Barber Park Education and Event Center. I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the two Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we have ten agreements, any discussion or issues with any of the ten agreements that's on the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We have something to talk about the modeling for the Hubbard Reservoir Aquifer Recovery Project.
Yes, I can speak to that.
Zach can speak to that.
I was going to ask the same question.
Yeah, go ahead, Zach.
So as you know, this project is delivers water into our Hubbard Reservoir, and so this project was presented and we presented at the Water Summit also this project to study aquifer recharge out at Hubbard Reservoir, so we've installed monitoring wells on site, and this contract is to hire a modeler engineer to model the groundwater flow in conjunction with our monitoring wells.
How deep are the monitoring wells?
Hundred to hundred and ten feet.
Okay, good. Thank you, any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I've got one for Steve O'Meara, for agreement for dark trace detection and response email filtering software between Ada County and Insight Public Sector, so I'm curious, what's dark trace detection?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, Dark Trace is going to be our new anti-spam software, we're looking to replace the one that we currently have, we've been trialing this one, and we found it to be considerably more effective at both stopping problematic emails as well as also not having positive, what what do you call, what's the term? Picking the wrong emails, right, it seems to be a lot more efficient, a lot smarter, so it will be replacing our other system.
Okay, any other questions? All right, any other issues on any of the agreements? I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, just in that amplification of that water study, the Water Summit, we did talk about that, and the Water Summit, we also talked about all the other things we're doing here in Ada County that help us come together to address all the water issues, and Hubbard is one of those things in the well, we're doing other things, so just as just as a comment there. And Hubbard is one of those things in the well. We're doing other things. So just, uh, just as a comment there.
Yes, I met the fellow that's coming to be doing the, uh, the, uh, the work out there.
Yes, and he, and he's excited about doing it.
Yeah.
It's refining the model, the, the, the big model. It's a mile square.
Right. For a small, yeah.
From Department of Water Resources and we're trying to refine that in Ada County so we can use the water data.
That's good.
More effectively, effectively for us here.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the ten agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We now have weekly indigen items. We have a motion on the weekly indigen items.
I'll move to accept the recommendations of the Indigen Services Staff as listed on the summary of cases dated May seventh, twenty twenty-four and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
All right. Any further discussion? I'm hearing none. Uh, all in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Is there any other business needs to be brought before the board today? We thank you all for your participation and, uh, we're adjourned.
project management first, I guess. We have that first.
Well, let's do it fast before Sean shows up.
Yeah, before Sean.
He's not going to be here. Okay, uh, today is, uh, Tuesday, May the seventh. Time is, um, nine forty-eight. Uh, the Board of Commissioners is in session, sitting as the Board of County Emergency Medical Services District for its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. Uh, we also have with us-
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
And her IT guy. Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, uh, we'll do the claims journal. Any questions or issues on the claims journal? I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the payments of claims listed on the claims journal dated May third, twenty twenty-three. For regarding EMS expenditures.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. We have personnel actions.
I'll move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, uh, uh, Commissioner Daly, could you give us an EMS update?
Yes, everything is under control.
Everything is under control. Uh, I, uh, Sean is, uh, is out and so is his second in command. So they said they wouldn't be here today, so we'll have to, we can cut out early work. Well, yes. So without further ado, we are adjourned.